Being at our 103rd regular session. Uh, Lou, can I please get a motion to suspend the procedure?
Show of moves, Mr. Mayor. I see rules six point one, six point three, and six point four.
I'll second. It's Emily.
Emily seconded again. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, it looks like all of you, everybody. Shelley didn't make it back on yet. All right, uh, I'm gonna do the invocation, then we'll do the pledge of the flag. Uh, if you would please stand and join as we do that, I'd appreciate it. Eternal God, stir thou our minds and stimulate our hearts with a high sense of patriotism as we approach the Fourth of July. May all that this day symbolizes renew our faith in freedom, our devotion to democracy, and redouble our efforts to keep a government of the people, by the people, and for the people, truly alive in our world. Granted, that way we may highly resolve on this great day to dedicate ourselves anew to the task of ushering in an era when goodwill shall live in the hearts of a free people, justice shall be the light to guide their feet, and peace shall be the goal of humankind, for the glory of thy holy name and the good of our nation and of all mankind. Amen. My pleasure, allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the Republic of the United States.
We're just saying, one nation, under God, and the principle of liberty, justice.
Thank you. Quick announcement, the meeting scheduled in July is July the seventh, the fourteenth, and the twenty-first are our work sessions here in the council chamber at four P M. July twenty-eighth will be a regular session at seven P M. And next up is the COVID nineteen update by our great city administrator Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things, as the mayor said, we'll be back in council chambers July seventh. Uh, we look to utilize, uh, the regular session format and layout for, uh, council to sit across the top. We'll also try to spread some things out, um, related to, uh, all of you sitting up in front. Uh, we're also gonna have seats removed so that we have social distancing out in the, uh, audience. So we'll have all that taken care of, plenty of signage, and, uh, we should be good to go on the seventh. Uh, also, uh, just an update, we are opening, uh, the lobby, uh, for customers on Monday, uh, at eight A M. The hours will be eight to four. Uh, access will be restricted to the first floor only, uh, for utility payments, um, and any other, uh, transactions that usually occur in the lobby. Uh, tax bills will be going out, but we won't be seeing any, uh, volume on that until the next week. Uh, the bill, all buildings will be open to the public on July thirteenth, uh, including the upper floors of City Hall. Uh, and I'll, uh, make that announcement again as we get closer. Uh, an update on the pool, uh, Potterfield Pool was opened today to, uh, to visit, uh, to, uh, to guests. Uh, also, we have a nice tool out on the, uh, Hagerstown, uh, City of Hagerstown webpage under Parks and Recreation and Recreation Facilities that will show the current capacity of the pool, uh, at any time. And that's a real-time, um, uh, indicator. So if anyone is wondering how close to, uh, about, uh, the thirty-three percent capacity we are at, uh, they can go there and save perhaps a trip and not be able to get into the pool. Um, Merrick Castle, um, the city council approved, uh, the fireworks display that'll be July fourth, Saturday night in Fairgrounds Park, and looking forward to that. And, um, we all, uh, the last thing, Mayor, is that we will, uh, be sending out reminder letters for utilities, uh, rearages, uh, in the next week. I can update the council on, uh, the fact that we are currently at sixty day and over, three hundred eighty-five thousand, almost three hundred eighty-six thousand dollars of rearages in water. And we're, uh, at six oh five, six hundred five thousand, five hundred dollars. Yeah, five hundred dollars in rearages on electric. Uh, that is about three times the normal rearage that we would go into a season with. Uh, we have not heard of the governor is going to lift the moratorium on cutoffs and late charges on July first. So obviously, um, we are, um, waiting to hear, uh, how that will go. Uh, we have partnered with C A C to, um, get as much information out and basically saturate, uh, social media and, and, and regular media, uh, with, uh, resources for help for those that are having trouble, uh, getting utilities paid. We'll have a press release going out in the next week that will have that information. And we're also going to plan a, a press conference in council chambers where Jordi Newman from C A C and Beth Everhart from, uh, Support Services will be, uh, providing this information as to where citizens and customers can go, uh, to try to get help with, uh, with their rearages. Uh, also, we, you know, I'm, I implore anyone, uh, that right now is sitting on an rearage for their utilities. If they're, if you're having a problem, please contact, uh, Utility Customer Service so that we can help you with, uh, payment arrangements or get you to someone or an agency that may be able to help you in getting, uh, in getting utilities, if, if not caught up immediately, uh, caught up over time. We do not want to, to, uh, suspend service for anybody. And, uh, we will do everything we can to help those out. But we need to, to have that conversation, so please contact us. Um, that is all for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. All right, uh, we, uh, citizen, or I'm sorry, appointments for next, historic district commission, uh, George, Chris George, William, Doug Carroll, and Robert Powell, could I get a, uh, motion, please?
Some move?
I'll second.
All right, these terms are to expire, uh, for Chris George, term expired November thirtieth, twenty twenty. William Doug Carroll, the term expired June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Robert Powell, the term expired July twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, motion carries. Uh, citizen comments, as low five P M. This evening, we had no citizen comments. Uh, again, this is, uh, the last time we'll have to do it this way, hopefully forever, but we never know. Uh, but, uh, uh, there, there are no citizen comments at this time. Uh, under public hearings, we, uh, we actually, uh, have, uh, only two this evening. Uh, we are going to take the Coal Road properties, uh, off the agenda, and Kathy Maher, uh, will explain the reasoning why behind that. And so the first annexation case will be case number A dash two oh two oh dash oh four, the Valley Mall Road Properties. Megan and Kathy, hello.
Hi, everyone. So first, I just wanted to say, uh, our reasoning for postponing the public hearing for case A twenty twenty oh three, uh, the Coal Road Properties. Um, the legal advertisement for the hearing contained an incorrect address. Uh, we actually advertised one seven two two five to one seven two three nine Coal Road. Uh, those properties are not proposed for annexation. Uh, the addresses that are proposed for annexation include one seven one one one, one seven one four five, one seven one five one, one seven one five five, and one seven one five nine Coal Road, and then the remaining two storefronts, uh, in that strip. So it's Coles, the Christmas Tree Shops, Ross, C S W, and the U S Cellular, all in that, uh, same strip. Um, so I'll go ahead and share my screen and start the public hearing for A twenty twenty oh four. Okay, so this is case number eight twenty twenty oh four, it's activation of pre-annexation agreement, W S two thousand five twenty. Uh, the property to be annexed, uh, shown here in this little gray polygon, uh, the subject properties, Front Valley Mall Road, and are contiguous with the city's corporate boundary. Uh, the properties are within the city's growth area and are served by city water. Um, the proposed annexation properties include the two Marriott Hotels, so it's the Marriott Spring Hill Suites and the Marriott Courtyard, and then the restaurant or the diner that's over there as well. Um, all these properties proposed for annexation are subject to the pre-annexation agreement, case W S two thousand five twenty. Um, and that pre-annexation agreement was an agreement signed by the property owners, uh, in which they received water service uh, in exchange for agreeing to be annexed when we became contiguous. Uh, for the acreage and zoning details, the total acreage to be annexed is four point eight eight acres. The current county zoning is Planned Business, or P B. Uh, the proposed city zoning is Commercial Regional, or C R. Uh, and the county zoning is generally consistent with the city zoning. Uh, however, the one difference is that the county's P B district does not permit residential uses, uh, while the city's C R district permits residential uses in newly constructed mixed-use buildings. Um, and the image you're seeing here is the zoning exhibit, so again, it's proposed to be C R, and here's the city's corporate boundary here. Uh, and then this image might be kind of blurry, but here's a Google Street View, kind of showing all, uh, buildings that are proposed for annexation. So here are the two Marriott Hotels here, and then the restaurant over here. Uh, and then as far as the annexation process, uh, following the annexation resolution, the, the resolution, uh, and the adopted annexation plan were sent to the state and the county for a thirty-day review and comment. Um, we have received feedback from the state that points out the inconsistencies between the city's proposed C R zoning and the county's current P B zoning, uh, which I mentioned. Uh, and then we have also received input from the property owner expressing concerns on the imposition of city property taxes immediately upon annexation, uh, due to COVID nineteen impacts on the hotel and the restaurant industries. Uh, and then I'd also like to enter into the record the certificate of advertisement and the file by reference, A twenty twenty oh four. Uh, and then here's the remaining schedule, so we have, uh, the resolution was introduced on April twenty-eighth, and the plan was also adopted on April twenty-eighth, today's June twenty-third for the public hearing. Uh, the approval of the resolution will be most likely on July twenty-eighth, and then if it's adopted at that regular meeting, the annexation would become effective forty-five days later in mid-September. Um, and then I think we will leave the record open for ten days, so here's my contact info and email. If you wanted to submit any input, um, you can go ahead and do so for the next ten days. Uh, that's all I have for that one.
Uh, any, any comments from council? For Megan?
I think we have someone who has called in to speak as well.
Yeah, we do have Noel Manalo, uh, from, uh, Mason Stockbridge. Are you on the phone, Noel?
Hi, Mr. Mayor, this is Noel. Yes, I am.
All righty, uh, give me just one second, and then I will get right back to you. Uh, again, is there any, uh, comments or questions for Megan on her portion? All right, seeing none, hearing none, no, uh, so now we'll open up the record for or against, uh, uh, this, uh, this annexation. Uh, no, uh, go ahead and, uh, present, uh, present what you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Pleasure to be addressing you this evening. Just wanted to reiterate again, um, oh, uh, sorry, to, to reintroduce myself, Noel Manalo, losses of miles in Stockbridge, here on behalf of Valley World Inc. and Coal Road Holding Holdings, L L C. They are the property owners of, uh, the subject properties for this annexation case. I wanted to just, uh, address you all in reiteration of the comments, uh, in our letter that was submitted by my colleague on, uh, June nineteenth, which I believe you all have, uh, received. I'm not speaking either in opposition nor in support of the proposed annexation, but would rather want to bring to, uh, the attention of the mayor and council our concerns. Obviously, the, uh, virus had a significant impact on the businesses located on the properties. We essentially have had zero guests at the hotel and zero diners for no, zero guests at the diner for a number of months. And this is obviously, uh, significantly impacted, uh, the businesses there and the ability to, uh, you know, continue as, as we, as we were before. The timing of the annexation couldn't have been worse insofar as it would increase the cost of, uh, the real estate taxes. And even though we have now the applicable government entities moving towards reopening, we'll only be able to open at, for, uh, in the example, the diner's fifty percent capacity. And obviously, the hospitality, uh, industry isn't going to come back to its current, to, to its, uh, previous levels anytime soon. On top of all that, we now have, uh, significant cleaning protocols and other, other costs associated with even just operating. So we're dealing with limited capacity, increased costs for running the business. And again, a, an, an increase in the, in additional costs in the way of real estate tax couldn't come at a worse time. You know, that being said, um, obviously, we, we understand our obligations and, and we do definitely want to be, uh, cooperative with, with the city. So in the interest of at least helping to, you know, ease the, ease the, the, the burden, uh, associated with this, we're hoping for, uh, a delay of this, uh, annexation so that we can at least, you know, work through some of the numbers and perhaps, uh, see, see the businesses turn around in, in a way that can make this a little bit more viable of an option. Aside from that, perhaps there's, uh, some, uh, interest in, in the mayor, in the council to looking at it maybe a, a graduated phase in of the real estate taxes that would be applicable upon annexation, perhaps over a period of ten years with some phase-ins at, at different percentages over the years. And we, we certainly have, uh, some thoughts on that. We've shared some of them already with your professional staff. Um, but again, that, that would all sort of go towards helping with, with, uh, making this, this additional cost of, of the real estate taxes, hopefully, continue, you know, uh, the viability of running these, these properties and, and helping these businesses stay, uh, stay viable as well. So we would greatly appreciate any consideration you might give to the, the situation here. I know that, uh, there are many businesses, many property owners, many citizens, many employees, and obviously municipal and county and local governments that are all feeling the impact of what these last few months have had. Um, and, you know, you, this is another voice in that chorus, but here you have an opportunity to help out in a very direct and very meaningful way. Um, you know, we've got lenders, expenses, uh, this continued amount. And so any consideration that you might have to helping us, uh, in any regard on this annexation would be greatly appreciated. Thank you for your consideration, uh, here to answer any questions, and, uh, we, we, again, thank you for your, the consideration of our, our concerns.
Thank you, Noel. Any, any, uh, thing for, for Noel from the council? Okay.
No, uh, no.
Go ahead.
Uh, this is Austin Heffernan. Um, Noel, I just had a, a question. Are any of the properties in the restaurant, were they able to get, um, any of the, uh, the, the loans or, uh, or grants that, uh, could be earmarked for property taxes?
Uh, Councilor, my understanding is at least, uh, as far as the, the, the diner goes, we did encourage the, uh, the tenant to seek those. Uh, my understanding is at least on the first tranche, they were, they were unable to secure some of that funding. I'm not a hundred percent sure with, with the hotels, I can, I can double check on that. But as far as the diner, I believe they, they did not get the first tranche.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I know it's, uh, it's gonna be difficult for a while for, for, uh, for, for every business coming back. We understand that. Anything else? Anything from you, Megan? All right, uh, we'll close this public hearing, uh, leave the record open for ten days. Then we'll move on to the local conversion district overlay of two oh two Howard Street.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be recusing myself from this, uh, hearing.
Got you.
Okay, so I'm going, I'm gonna go ahead and share the presentation for the local conversion district overlay, public hearing, uh, two oh two Howard Street. Um, this application was filed by Daniel Wolf of Gideon Properties. Um, as for the site details, it's located at two oh two West Howard Street. It's on the corner of West Howard Street and Maryland Avenue, as you can see here. Um, it's a vacant mixed-use building. It's approximately seventy-five hundred square foot, uh, size site, and the existing zoning is residential moderate density. Um, and it's an expired non-conforming use, which means that, um, it was a mixed-use building at one point, and it sat vacant for long enough to become a non-conforming use in the Armad zoning district. Uh, so that's why they're applying for this overlay. Uh, and here's just another, um, map of the site location. As you can see, it's this parcel selected here, and it's in the Armad district and surrounded by Armad zoning as well. Um, here we have some street view images of the existing building. So this first one is the view from Howard Street, and the second one on the right is the view from Maryland Avenue. Uh, so the proposal is to have a first-floor commercial unit and three residential units. Uh, the windows will be reinstalled across the street facades. The aluminum canopy and the Howard Street right-of-way will be removed. Um, and some of the proposed commercial uses include artist studios, business service centers, quick printing service, business and professional office, photography studios, catering restaurants, and dry cleaning and laundry services. Um, and the proposed parking recommended by planning commission is to permit a total of eight spaces. Um, that would be two vehicles deep and four vehicles wide, which would provide two spaces per unit. Uh, and then here we have some before and afters of the existing building. So on the left, we have the existing building from Howard Street. And as you can see in the proposed building, this window here will be opened. Uh, and then a similar situation on the Maryland Avenue facade, these two windows, as you can see in the proposed, will also be opened as well. Uh, and then again, this is just to reactivate an existing mixed-use building that has been vacant for years. Um, like I said before, it was previously a well-known mixed-use building with a chain of commercial uses, having occupied the space over time. Uh, the proposed use is compatible with the surrounding area. Um, the occupied units will increase the city population from one to three people. Again, there's three residential units proposed. Um, water and wastewater service do currently exist. There are no identified traffic capacity issues. Um, reoccupation of the site would prevent a blighting condition because, again, it has sat vacant for years. Um, and also, the comprehensive plan encourages adaptive reuse, just like this. And then lastly, we have some site plan conditions recommended by the planning commission. Uh, so the modifications to the building shall be in accordance with the proposal. Um, they also recommend expanding the parking lot twelve feet and assigning two spaces per unit. Uh, so as you can see in these photos here, this yellow box shows the existing page parking area at the property. Um, it's a, it's about a vehicle and a half long this way and then four this way. Uh, so they just recommend it extending it twelve feet. It's right now it's twenty-four to go to thirty-six, uh, to fit two cars deep and four vehicles wide. Um, and then also, the sign shall be in accordance with the exhibit. It's supposed to be a projected and illuminated sign that's four feet by two feet. And again, we will have the record open for ten days to submit input. Um, I have my contact info here, and then also, I'd like to enter into the record, uh, the planning commission file by reference, C M twenty twenty oh one.
The certificate of advertisement.
And the certificate of advertisement as well. That's.
Thank you, Megan. Any questions or comments for Megan from the council? Okay, seeing none, uh, we know that there is no, uh, no one signed up either to oppose or, uh, to, uh, advocate for this, uh, for this rezoning, so, uh, is there, or is overlay, so, uh, seeing none, Megan, you have anything else for us, or are you finished? Okay, so we'll leave the record open for ten days, and we'll move out of this public hearing. I need to get a motion to approve the minutes of May fifth, twelfth, nineteenth, twenty-sixth, and twenty-ninth.
The move.
Kristen moved.
Second.
Austin second, discussion.
That was Kristen that moved.
Yeah, I got that.
I thought you said look.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move that all the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
Emily, and then Lou, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of an ordinance to establish, at this rate, you know, approval of an ordinance to establish a deed of easement by N E two thirty-eight Sharpsburg Pike Public Safety Training Center.
Mr. Mayor, move for the approved.
Go ahead.
Kristen, just go.
Okay, uh, Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval of an ordinance for a deed of easement between the Board of County Commissioners of Washington County, Maryland, to grant and convey a perpetual and permanent easement for the water service at nine two three eight Sharpsburg Pike, as described in the attached ordinance and supporting document.
Second.
Second.
Emily second, we can do it. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, approval of an ordinance, City Hagerstown Conference Rezoning Case Number Z M two thousand nineteen dash oh one.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move that the mayor and city council approve an ordinance for zoning reclassification and zoning map amendments, case number Z M dash two zero one nine dash zero one, to rezone those areas which are associated with the comprehensive rezoning based on the two thousand, oh, two thousand eighteen comprehensive plan. A chart and map are attached to and made part of this ordinance.
Second.
Austin second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Sounds like the motion.
No.
Up four to one. Got that? Under new business or induction of an ordinance, M P, Hagerstown Industrial, L L C.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the introduction of an ordinance to convey foreign developed sections of public right-of-way to N D Hagerstown Industrial, L L C. These rates of way compromising portions of Center Street, Edgewood Avenue, and Alley two dash fifty have been determined to no longer be needed for a public purpose. The total area of this conveyance is approximately seven tenths of an acre.
Second.
Lou and then Emily, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Motion carries, approval resolution establishing a Hagerstown Youth Advisory Council Partner Group Ad-Hoc Committee.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the mayor and city council to approve the resolution establishing a Hagerstown Youth Advisory Council Partner Group Ad-Hoc Committee. The goal of the partner group is to assist with the review of applications and service mentors and advisors to the Hagerstown Youth Advisory Council throughout the program year.
Second.
Second, all. Second, Austin, discussion. All favor.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Approval of a resolution. Rate for stormwater billing fee unit for the stormwater utility fee for calendar years 2021, 2022, and 2023.
Mr. Mayor, move for the approval of a resolution to establish the annual rate of the stormwater utility fee for calendar years 2021, 2022, and 2023. The annual rate shall be $30 per 1,000 square feet of impervious surface for calendar year 2021, effective January 1, 2021. The annual rate shall be $34 per 1,000 square feet of impervious surface for calendar year 2022, effective January 1, 2022. The annual rate shall be $36 per 1,000 square feet of impervious surface for calendar year 2023, effective January 1, 2023.
Second.
Discussion. All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval resolution to, one, rescind curb and sidewalk improvement program to construct or replace the property owners issued order after April 9, 2019. Two, reimburse property owners who have incurred costs to construct or replace sidewalks and or curbs after receiving notices to do so from the city. And three, to forgive loans made to property owners to construct or replace sidewalks and or curbs after receiving notice to do so from the city.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move in light of the passage of the amendment to Code of the City of Hagerstown, Chapter 216, Article 2, sidewalks and curbs, for the approval of a resolution to, one, rescind curb and sidewalk improvement program notices to construct or replace to property owners issued after April 9, 2019. Two, to reimburse property owners who have incurred costs for the period from April 9, 2019 to present, to construct or replace sidewalks and/or curbs after receiving notice to do so from the city. And three, to forgive loans made to property owners to construct or replace sidewalks and/or curbs after receiving notice to do so from the city for the period from October 1, 2017 to present.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to point out that the reimbursements would occur after January 1st, once the stormwater program gets in.
Got you. Once I get some money to do so, right. All right, so this discussion will be Kelly. Who was the second motion? Emily.
Emily.
Thank you. You guys sound a lot alike tonight. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? She carries. Approval of the curb and sidewalk replacement program.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the approval of a policy entitled curb and sidewalk replacement program. This policy will provide guidance to staff for evaluating and prioritizing curb and sidewalk repairs to be completed by the City of Hagerstown as required by code chapter 216.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, hereby move.
Uh, was just any discussion? Yeah. Okay, I have one thing. Finally, after 11 years of trying, 12 years, we have a curb and sidewalk replacement program that doesn't put it on the backs of the citizens. And I think that makes everybody pretty happy. So, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of a policy stormwater protection program, credit and incentive manual.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the approval of a credit and incentive manual for the new stormwater protection program that provides criteria to enable property owners to reduce their stormwater utility charges important with the city to install stormwater facilities on their property. By statute, a means of providing credits is required with the implementation of a stormwater utility fee.
Second.
Shelley and then Austin, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval resolution fiscal year 2021 to 2025, five-year consolidated plan, fiscal year 2020-2021 annual action plan, and the 2020 analysis of impediments to fair housing choice.
Mr. Mayor, hereby approve for a resolution to approve fiscal year 2021 to 2025, five-year consolidated plan, fiscal year 2020 to 2021 annual action plan, and the 2020 analysis of impediments to fair housing choice.
Second, this is Shelley.
All right, Kristin and Shelley. Discussion. All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Approval of a resolution, second addendum to purchase agreement for the sale of 3640 North Potomac Street.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the mayor and city council to approve a resolution authorizing a second addendum to the purchase agreement for the sale of property located at 3640 North Potomac Street. This city-owned property is currently under contract to be sold to 339 Antedum LLC. The second addendum will extend the buyer's economic feasibility study period deadline from July 10, 2020 to September 10, 2020. All other terms and conditions of the purchase agreements will remain the same.
Second.
That was Emily, Austin, Emily, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval update to the community development block grant, citizen participation plan.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the approval of required updates to the community development block grant, citizen participation plan. The updates to the plan align with CDBG citizen participation requirements and will ensure ongoing compliance with federal regulations.
Second.
Second.
Emily and then Austin. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Approval to add 14 North Potomac Street to the city's competitive negotiating sale process.
Mr. Mayor, move for the mayor and city council to approve the addition of 14 North Potomac Street in the city's competitive negotiated sale CNS process with the goal of transferring the property to the private sector and returning property to tax rolls. The property will be added to CNS with a list price of 2.485 million based on a recently conducted appraisal. Purchase proposals will need to accommodate existing city offices located in the building and will be evaluated based on both offer price and how the future use of the property will contribute to the vitality of downtown.
Second.
Kristin and Austin, discussion. All favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of on-call electrical maintenance service contract, 7120 to 63021.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the mayor and council to authorize and approve the renewal of the on-call electrical maintenance contract for the contract term of July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. This is year two of five optional one-year renewals. MEC Incorporated's pricing is as follows. Regular hourly rate, 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM, Monday through Friday, $55 an hour. After-hours rate, Monday through Friday, 8250 per hour. Weekend rate, 8250 per hour. Holiday rate, $110 per hour. Material markup on supplies, 10%.
Second.
Second by Emily, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of HVAC service and maintenance agreement contract, 7120 to 63021.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the mayor and council to authorize and approve the renewal of the HVAC service and maintenance agreement for the contract term of July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021. This is year two of three optional one-year renewals. MS Johnston Company Incorporated FY21 annual amount is $36,584 with a departmental breakdown below. Light Department, $1,880. Parks Department, $6,582. Public Works, $14,312. Wastewater Department, $8,000. Water Department, $4,240. Fire Department, $1,570. Grand total, $36,584.
Second.
All right, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of a fiscal year 20 general fund transfer to the CIP for approved HUR projects.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the mayor and council approval to transfer amount necessary to cover the FY20 year-to-date spend for the C0025 pavement preservation program. This project was originally approved with 100% funding source of highway user revenue HUR. Due to the pandemic, the state of Maryland has sent a notification that the FY20 funding is being reduced.
Second.
Second by Shelley, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of request for water under city's water and wastewater policy, 2005 Green Castle Pike LLC.
Mr. Mayor, move for the mayor and city council to approve the request from 2005 Green Castle Pike LLC for water services for a land parcel in the area of Maryland Route 63 and Business Parkway, which is located beyond the Hagerstown medium-range growth area for the proposed new development of two industrial flex buildings. Property is designated as parcel 827 on Tax Map 48. Approval is granted for this property outside the city's medium-range growth area under exception number six of the city's water and wastewater policy. Approval is only for the specific project presented per the attached request. The approval requires a pre-annexation agreement with the city of Hagerstown, an exception. Granted pursuant to the city's water and wastewater policy is void if the following has not occurred within 18 months of the approval by the mayor and city council. One, a site plan approval by Washington County. Two, building permit filed with Washington County. And three, all city water fees paid. Any request for a variance or extension of the 18-month time limit must be submitted for consideration by the mayor and city council at least 60 days prior to expiration date and is subject to approval by the mayor and city council.
Second.
Second by Shelley, any discussion? All in favor?
I would just.
Go ahead.
I would just note that, you know, I know that staff, both at city and county level, worked on this a good bit to establish and define these areas better. I still believe, I think, that the city is working and I hope that the county recognizes that the city, the mayor and council are working in good faith to extend these services beyond those areas that we deem within our plans are most appropriate to do so.
Thank you, Chris. That was Emily, by the way. On the second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Approval of request for water under city's water and wastewater policy, Heritage Hewitt LLC.
Mr. Mayor, move for the mayor and city council to approve the request for Heritage Hewitt LLC for water service for land parcels in the area of Maryland Route 63 and Maryland Route 40, which are located beyond the Hagerstown medium-range growth area for a proposed new warehouse distribution center project. The property is designated as parcels 393, 561, 91, and 568 on Tax Map 36. Approval is granted for this property outside the city's medium-range growth area under exception number six of the city's water and wastewater policy. The approval is only for the specific project presented per the attached request. The approval requires a pre-annexation agreement with the city of Hagerstown, an exception granted pursuant to the city's water and wastewater policy is void if the following has not occurred within 18 months of the approval by mayor and city council. One, site plan approved by Washington County. Two, building permit filed with Washington County. And three, all city water fees paid. Any request for a variance or extension of the 18-month time limit must be submitted for consideration by the mayor and city council at least 60 days prior to the expiration date and is subject to approval by the mayor and city council.
Second.
Second.
Austin got that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of fiscal year 2029 payment for 911 funding to Washington County.
Mr. Mayor, mayor and council hereby direct staff not to pay, to not pay Washington County $405,630 for FY20 funding of the 911 center and wages. Staff is directed to only pay FY20 when a signed agreement and resolution can be reached.
Second.
Emily? That was you? Okay. Hey, discussion. I want to point out one thing that Scott and I had talked about this morning, that dawn, both of us actually at the same exact time. There are two employees of the city of Hagerstown who are currently at the 911 center. One of those is Tom Brown. And that individual is very important to Washington County. So, you know, basically, we are paying for one individual. We're paying $405,630 for one individual at 911. And we're paying for Tom Brown, who is the right hand of. So, yeah, let's reach an agreement. Anybody?
I also just want to add that this goes back to the bigger picture of a lot of funding outside of the 911 center that would include fire and rescue. So I hope that sometime soon, we can sit down and have a conversation about the big picture.
Anybody else?
This is Kristin. I just want to understand, I guess maybe a little better, the reason we're not, or the reason we're, the reason we're taking a motion not to do something. I get it. I heard Scott say to us a number of weeks ago, we were on a path of resolution to this bigger picture of items before it got derailed, so to speak, by change in county administration and, you know, separation due to the COVID events. And I guess I felt in hearing that information from Scott that there would be some resumption of working toward that goal. If that's the case, I'm curious why we're taking a motion not to do something rather than just not doing it until resolution is reached.
Well, you know, I could only add one thing. July 1 is coming. Payment is expected. There's no resolution. There's been no agreement. Talks have not continued on this subject. And I believe forcing the hand of our county counterparts to move forward to put together a resolution, an agreement of some sort, needs to happen. And I believe this will, so get their attention, Kristin.
So, I mean, is that where we're at? Like, there's no discussion and we're at the point of forcing hands? Or are we at the point where discussion was going to resume among staff, like the other subjects? Like the MRGA and the other thing?
I reached out to county administrator a week or so ago. I can't remember. I've not gotten any response. So I figured that they're a little busy over there getting their, their selection is for a county administrator, I would assume so. I've given the benefit of the doubt on that one, but I'm still waiting to hear a time that they'd be willing to talk.
I think, I think this is. Keep in mind, hey, keep in mind, you're free to go against us. I'm just saying, you know, but let's, you know, we aren't getting any movement. And that's the bottom line.
I hear that. I'm just curious. I, I hear that, I'm just curious why we're taking an act to do nothing.
Because we would normally have made payment, uh, the week, or before July one. And July one is coming. And, so, again, feel free, vote against it. Uh, anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Acceptance of Coronavirus Response Initiative Grant.
Mister Mayor, hereby move for mayor and council approval and acceptance of the Coronavirus Response Initiative Grant, the amount of sixty thousand four hundred and seventy three dollars. This grant will provide funding to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus.
Second.
Again by Austin. Any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. City administrator comments, anything to add, Scott?
Uh, just one thing, uh, since we are not meeting next week, uh, Mayor, uh, let everybody know the city offices will be closed on July third and will reopen on the following Monday. And I cannot tell you how excited I am to not have to do these virtual meetings any longer. That's all for me.
Alrighty. Kelly.
Something encouraging, um, that I saw this evening was salsa mama. Um, there were probably seventy five percent of the seats filled outside tonight. And I don't know if it's because it's Taco Tuesday and things are less expensive, but what a tremendous outpouring of support to our downtown businesses through all of this. I mean, so even when things are back to normal on a Tuesday night, typically, we could drive downtown and there wouldn't be anyone there. So it's really encouraging to see that. And another encouraging thing that I wanted to mention is, um, I just wanted to recognize our, our chief of police and H P D, um, and their sincere interest in, in racism and how it's affected our city. I know that there are efforts and discussions, um, being done locally to create courses and trainings for the state and the city and county employees, um, that would work to combat these incidents and promote, uh, diversity appreciation. Uh, I attended the Juneteenth celebration on Friday. And like those young people said, I, I really, really, really want to be on the right side of history. And it is encouraging to see our community working so hard to understand how to make it right. So, just a shout out for the police department and particularly Chief Piper.
Lou, and before you start, if you aren't speaking, please put your microphone on you. Go ahead, Lou. I'll come back to Lou. Alright, Austin?
Uh, nothing tonight, Mayor.
Lou? I think you said nothing tonight, right? Okay, alright, Kristen.
Uh, just briefly, uh, I certainly agree with, uh, city staff and especially Scott's comment. Uh, looking forward to get back to, uh, meeting in person, uh, directly, uh, with everyone. Uh, I think that our meetings are, are, are much better had that way. Um, and, uh, that said, uh, I will likely be, uh, away and on vacation, uh, the first, uh, week that we get back together, uh, depends, uh, on how things go. Um, uh, but I wanted to say that, you know, one of the reasons, uh, of many that I look forward to getting back together is I know that there are any number of topics that have arisen, uh, over the months that we have, uh, met in this virtual capacity. And I simply believe that, uh, it is much better to, to as humanly as possible, as face-to-face as possible, uh, to communicate our opinions and our ideas uh, and our feelings and positions on so many of the more sensitive, uh, subject matter, uh, that we deal with, uh, and topics and, and issues, uh, when folks can see us directly and, 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 uh, have that discourse with us, uh, in person, uh, in order for us to sort of figure out, uh, the better ways, uh, that we all, uh, know, uh, that are within us, uh, to collectively move forward.
Amen to that.
Yep, thank you very much, and Emily, last but not least.
I just wanted to bring up a couple of things. One was the closure of downtown to help the downtown restaurants. Um, we received really, really, really good feedback about that. And I know we can't, sorry, that's my dog. I know we can't, uh, do that every week, but it would be nice if we could do that somewhat regularly because the, the, the public really liked it and it really benefited our downtown.
Your dog is seconding it.
Sorry, I'm, I'm yelling at the dog. And, uh, as we, as we get back, uh, to somewhat normal operations in the city, I just wanted to really thank staff for everything that they did throughout these last three months, uh, to help keep their team safe, to help keep our public safe. Uh, this hasn't been easy on any of us, and I'm sure it took a toll on a lot of departments. Uh, we thank you, we know you aren't getting hazard pay and you deserve it. Uh, for everyone that continually showed up to our fire department, who continually walked in people's houses with that risk just hanging over their heads, and for our police department who has showed up every day, um, even surrounded by a virus. And, and in this environment right now, a lot of times in some not-so-welcome areas, we appreciate you and everything you do. That's all.
Okay, mine's gonna be really short. Uh, I just want to wish everyone a very happy Fourth of July. Go out there and celebrate the best you can, be safe, enjoy your family. And, uh, let's not forget what that day's about. Thank you. We're adjourned.